I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this ninth day of September 2021. Please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
So, welcome to the work session. We are on Zoom this morning. As you're all aware, the governor has authorized the use of Zoom-type meetings again in compliance with the Open Meetings Law. And we are allowing various go-back-to-Zooms. So choose, they're not required to. There'll still be some in-person meetings and I'm hoping that our next week's town board meeting will be in person. We're setting up the auditorium for that purpose. We are doing some construction over town hall and the elevator is being reconfigured so that it can reach the top level there. And because of that, the town board, normal town board meeting room is no longer ADA accessible without that elevator. So we're trying to get the auditorium available so that we can meet there. But Planning Board and Zoning Board, Conservation Board, all the other boards are going to be meeting via Zoom again. The, you know, in terms of COVID, and you know, we can have Ryan give us an update. I want to try to hold off on that till after we got through some of the other items in the agenda, if that's okay with you, Ryan. But we're pretty steady, you know, about fifteen to twenty cases per day in the town of Southampton. It hasn't gone up or down in the last week or two. It's primarily people who are not vaccinated. And there's, you know, we don't have the New York State emergency, we don't have the local emergency either in terms of declarations. So, but we can talk about COVID in a little bit. I want to see if we can get the agenda for the meeting, the draft agenda approved for the September fourteenth meeting. That way we can get that published. And then maybe we can get Ryan back here. Or we, I know we have an eleven fifteen item about flight plans, so maybe we can do that. And then maybe we'll have Ryan closer to noon, maybe eleven forty-five, can update us on COVID and any other matters. If that's okay with you, Ryan. Ryan, is that all right?
No problem at all.
Okay, perfect. All right, so if we can, if we can all grab the agenda for the, the meeting on the fourteenth. It's a one PM meeting. It's going to be at Town Hall. We're gonna, we're gonna do it in person, but we are, we're trying to make arrangements so that people can participate via Zoom. At that meeting, if we can figure that out. So that is part of our plan here. Okay. So at that meeting, we do have two public hearings. First is to consider historic landmark designation of the former Girl Scout Camp Tico Witha, Winter Cabin, or the Dining Hall. This is located at Squire Town Park, Seven West Landing Road, with entrance to sixty-two Red Creek Road in Hampton Bays. We believe that it will qualify as a landmark and if so, that'll qualify for CPF revenues in terms of restoration of the building. So we're gonna hold the hearing on that. And then the second public hearing is to consider improvements to the Hampton Bays Water District. And I believe that is for the directional drilling, putting the new water main in under the Shinnecock Bay, as well as the canal crossing. And then we get to resolutions. First one is eight thirty-four of twenty twenty-one. It authorizes the town attorney to pay Nimer deductibles for claims paid.
ID thirty-eight, three five seven. This is authorization to advertise and promote the Southport commuter connection service.
ID number three seven two five four, authorize the supervisor to sign amendment to contract with York Labs for the Hampton Bays Water District.
Okay, the next one is three seven two four two, authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents for governor's traffic safety grant. Three seven two seven seven, authorizes supervisor executing no-cost extension of term of contract for the Riverside Park Phase Two Design Services. Thirty-seven two seventy, authorizes supervisor to execute an agreement with HSO US for an upgrade to the Microsoft Dynamics Great Plains System. Thirty-eight, three forty-three, authorize the supervisor to sign amended contract with Flanders Ambulance Company to allocate $200,000 to Flanders Ambulance for its response to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And that's going, that's part of the federal money that will allow them or help them purchase some new equipment over there. Thirty-seven two sixty-one, authorizes use of Eastern Suffolk Bosie's Cooperative Bidding Program.
Three eight three six two, the twenty twenty-one notice to bidders for Quantock Creek Culver.
Thirty-eight, three two five, adopts the twenty twenty-two budget process schedule. Thirty-eight, three twenty-six, amends the twenty-one adopted budget for Bridgehampton and Sagaponic ECDs. Thirty-eight, three twenty-seven, amends the twenty-one adopted, sorry, so was somebody have a question? Thirty-eight, three two seven, amends the twenty-one adopted budget for the West Hampton Ambulance District. Thirty-eight, three two two, amends the twenty-one budget for various departments. Thirty-eight, two eighty-one, amends the twenty-one to twenty-five capital budget and adds sub-aquous crossings. That's for the, the Water District. Thirty-eight, three two four, amends the twenty-one to twenty-five capital budget for the Shinnecock Canal Maritime Park. Thirty-eight, three twenty-one, amends the twenty-one to twenty-five capital budget for Waste Management HBTS Attendant Booth. Thirty-eight, two ninety-nine, authorizes closure of capital projects. Thirty-eight, three three two, authorizes payment of, to Long Island Community Foundation. Thirty-eight, three sixty-four, adopts negative declaration for directionally-drilled water main under Shinnecock Canal and Hampton Bays. Thirty-eight, three sixty-one, is public interest order in the matter of the increase and improvement of the facilities of the Hampton Bays Water District pursuant to Town Law two oh two B. Thirty-eight, three sixty, is bond authorization of four point two five, one million two hundred fifty thousand for improvements to the Hampton Bays Water District. That will require a roll call and four votes. Thirty-eight, three one seven, retains David Spelman Barrett as it relates to Gail Lombardi versus Town Board of the town of Southampton. Three eight, three three nine, accepts donation from Pine Barrens Law Enforcement Council with the town's police department. It's a quad that's been donated. And John, you're next.
ID three seven two one six, amend the twenty twenty-one fee schedule for the Department of Land Management Building and Zoning Division.
Three eight, three five six, authorize the supervisor to transfer ownership of dangerous dog Loki to Southampton Animal Shelter Foundation.
ID three seven two seven one, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Easthampton Fire Department Seafood Festival on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. ID three seven two six nine, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bays Lions Club Night Annual Over the Bridge Ten K Run and Five K Run Walk on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Three eight, three two eight, authorizes September twenty twenty-one as Voices of Recovery Month within the town of Southampton in observance of National Recovery Month.
ID three eight, two nine two, authorization of cost waiver for the twenty twenty-one Forty-Sixth Annual Hampton Classic Horse Show from August twenty-sixth to September fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Three seven oh seven nine is twenty twenty-one part-time salaries. Thirty-seven, one one one, accepts resignation of Christine Fenton, our town engineer.
I think you skipped one.
Did I?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Three seven, two seven nine is twenty twenty-one standard workday and reporting resolution for adopted officials. And then thirty-seven, one one one, accepts the resignation of Christine Fenton, Town Engineer. Thirty-seven, two seventy-four, accepts resignation of Gabrielle Sorocco, Confidential Secretary, Town Clerk's Office. Thirty-eight, three one nine, accepts resignation of a heavy equipment operator, Waste Management. Thirty-seven, two seven six, appoint Shelley Brokowski to Confidential Secretary position in Town Clerk's Office. Thirty-eight, three three seven, is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Tracus Realty LLC and amends the CPF Management Plan. Include that property. Thirty-eight, three forty-two, is a notice of public hearing to consider amending the town of Southampton CPF project plan. Consider acquisition of lands of Camp Jerome LLC and amending the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan and include that property. Thirty-eight, three three eight, is a notice of public hearing to consider amending the town of Southampton CPF plan. Now to consider acquisition of lands of Jones and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. Thirty-eight, three sixty-three, is a notice of public scoping session to facilitate preparation of DEIS Draft Environmental Impact Statement for the Change of Zone Application Title Concerns for Independent Living, proposing a change from R twenty to multifamily MF forty-four and an increase in residential density pursuant to three thirty dash eight to enable twelve units per acre in order to construct a sixty-unit-supported housing development that is one hundred percent affordable in the hamlet of Tucko.
ID three eight, three four four, the notice of public hearing to consider wastewater treatment projects proposed for twenty twenty-one Community Preservation Fund CPF twenty percent water quality improvement plan funded.
John, you have another?
Yep, I'm gonna turn in pages here. ID three eight, three four five, is a notice of public hearing to consider non-point source abatement pollution prevention and aquatic habitat restoration projects proposed for twenty twenty-one Community Preservation Fund CPF twenty percent water quality improvement plan funded.
Okay, thirty-seven, two eighty-one, accepts the offer of dedication from BCS Development Limited.
Supervisors, it looks like there's an extra E in development in the title. We're just gonna remove that.
Okay. All right, then let's see if we can find these add-ons. Give me a second here.
I have them in hand if you have trouble finding them.
No, I know there was some, oh, okay, no, all right, add-ons. I have them here.
Okay.
All right, so this, I have four. Is that what you guys have?
Yes.
All right, so three eight, three six five, would appoint Thomas Houghton, PE, as acting town engineer. Three eight, three six six, would ratify stipulation of settlement and release of claims. Three eight, three six eight, is a notice of public hearing to accept the transfer and gift of a portion of the former Nassau Council of Girl Scouts property in Hampton Bays to the Community Preservation Fund Program. I believe that's the Caretaker's Cottage. The three eight, three six nine, authorizes grant application to the New York State Regional Economic Development Council Downtown Revitalization Initiative, DRI Round Five.
I would like to co-sponsor that one if I could.
Which one?
The last one.
The grant?
The revitalization grant, yes.
Okay. Sunday, you got that?
I do, thank you.
So it's already co-sponsored by Tommy John Scavoni and it also have Rick Martell?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Any questions about anything in the agenda? I know we went through everything very quickly. Everybody good to have it published?
Yes.
All right, so Sunday, you're good to go there.
Great, thank you.
All right, so the next, next item on the agenda has to do with flight paths. We're evaluating flight paths townwide and I'm gonna turn this over to Councilman Skivoni, who will introduce us.
Thank you, Supervisor, and thank you to members of the board. I'm here on behalf of the Aircraft Noise Advisory Committee and we have been to this board twice before. Once in the fall and then earlier this summer, in the fall, we were making you all aware of the flight paths and complaints predominantly out of East Hampton Airport. And we also let the board and the public know that this particular year is very important for East Hampton because they are considering changes or possible changes to their airport and we need to be up to date on that. So, so with that, I kind of want to share my screen. Charles, am I good to go on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna need everybody's help. Can you see my screen?
No. I think what you need to do is choose what you're trying to share and hit the share button.
Yeah. And away we go. Very good, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, just in the way of updates. These are our three areas where we have airports. I told you before, and I know this board is a workbook for the public's edification. None of these airports or helipads are in the jurisdiction of the town of Southampton, but they significant, they impact us significantly. And so what we did this summer was we analyzed flight paths and where they were actually flying. So what I am bringing to the board today and to the public today are the results of our findings and how we came about with the, with the numbers that you're about to see. So here are our three locations. We have Gabriski Airport in the West Hampton area. We have the Southampton Village Helport out on the Barrier Island on June Road. And then East Hampton Airport, which is on our boundary. The Southampton Village Helport is located right here. I showed this before. It's significantly closer to Hampton Bays than it is to Southampton. And those are measurements from downtown Southampton and downtown Hampton Bays. That actually goes to the corner of Palm Quagmire and Montauk Highway. So that's a location. And Francis Gabriski Airport in West Hampton. These are the flight operations for Gabriski Airport since two thousand and five. It's a significant airport. And, you know, with fifty, fifty-five thousand flights and those numbers are up this year. It is certainly germane to this conversation and it was part of our evaluation as well. This is Gabriski Airport. I just wanted to kind of remind the board and the public of that massive runway, nine thousand feet long. But it also has two other runways at five thousand feet as well. Okay, now, the Gabriski Airport routes predominant, they have voluntary noise abatement routes to the northwest and northeast. The northeast is indicated in that double arrow in blue. The northwest is a double arrow in red. And Gabriski requests that pilots for the planes and jets utilize these noise abatement areas. It's completely voluntary and so that is significant. And now the more populated areas, as I think everybody knows, are to the south, southeast, and southwest of this airport. Okay, we have resurrected the Gabriski Community Advisory Board and we met in, in August, excuse me, July. And we are going to be meeting again on November seventeenth in, at the county center in Riverside. Now, the East Hampton Airport. It is on the borderline of Southampton Town. It is located right here, some, right here. This is a, what I think is a really nice picture of it from the air. This actually comes from the cover of their economic feasibility report. And I would really like to just tell anyone who is interested in this that the town of East Hampton has been doing a number of studies on their own airport. It's all on their website. And, you know, for those of you who are very, very interested in this, you can certainly go there for a lot of pertinent information. So the first thing I ever brought to this board about air noise was a change in air traffic in March of twenty twenty. The helicopter routes. And just by way of history, our first helicopter route was down the spine of Long Island. This was, began in two thousand, somewhere around two thousand and seven and went to two thousand and twelve. This was the first November route. This was eventually changed. And this caused a lot of furor and, you know, people were, were very upset about this understandably, I think. Then it was changed and helicopters were required to fly the northern route. This was in two thousand and twelve. And the, the problem here was the transition over the North Fork. In order to get into East Hampton, you had to fly down over the North Fork to Robins Island and then in through North Sea, New York and East Hampton. And so that, that also caused a lot of concern up on the North Fork. Folks in Southold as well as Riverhead, I believe rightfully so, complained to East Hampton, the helicopter council, Senator Schumer, Congressman Zeldin, and pretty much anyone that they can, you know, tell about this. They were quite organized. And, and I believe that, that they've, you know, to their credit, they got some of these helicopter routes moved. And they were moved to what became this route. This is what we're seeing as the predominant helicopter routes now. Let me explain this. I'll let you digest this as well. Most of the helicopters fly along the southern route. They're supposed to be a mile out. They are not. And then in order to get into East Hampton, they transition at Hampton Bays. You can see the arrow there to Robins Island and then into East Hampton. That is the new November route and that was created in March of twenty twenty. So in March of twenty twenty, we go, we were in a pandemic. And I remember talking to folks and letting them know about this. And they say, they would say, wow, you know, I, people in Hampton Bays would say, you know, I, I noticed the uptick in air traffic. It must be due to the pandemic. And we would tell them, no, it's, it's the new route. Well, now that the pandemic has subsided, I don't even know what to say about that. But it's, you know, we had, we saw more traffic this summer and we saw more air traffic and folks coming out here. And so it really ramped up along our southern shore and in Hampton Bays. Now, the red route is the exit route from East Hampton and that's called the Echo Route. There is helicopter traffic to the north that still go over the North Fork, but a lot less. In fact, more transition to the west and then go over western Southampton Town. So those are the routes. And this one was actually on the helicopter council's website as a success story over Memorial Day weekend. And I think that this is important to us and it tells a significant story, is that the incoming routes are marked in red. The exit routes are marked in green and this is their fly neighborly program. And you could really see where, where the flights are going. So we wanted to know, you know, where the flights were. And I showed this board what we were doing and we, we developed aircraft flight evaluation zones. And then we took pictures of flight aware websites and used time-lapse photography. And we get this. Now, this one was from June eighteenth and this is about a minute long, so bear with me. And these are the flights in a two-hour period. All of these flights that you see are below four thousand five hundred feet. So we wanted to know where they actually were flying. Because, you know, if you're in Hampton Bays and you're seeing a helicopter fly north, you really don't know where it's going unless, you know, you're, you're, you get on your computer and you find it and, you know, and most people don't do that. But we do. And we did. So we, we looked at this two-hour period and we wanted to know what flights were coming in and out of Gabriski. What flights were coming in and out of the heliport and what flights were coming in and out of East Hampton. And we counted them. And this is what we came up with. This is a reminder of the flight evaluation zone. So each one of these areas, we counted to see if a plane flew over the eastern port of Southampton Town, North Fork or Southampton West or a combination of them. And this is what we found on that particular day. Right? That was one evaluation day that we used. And we did this a number of times this summer. Here's another day and I'll only do two of these because even though they're fun to watch or scary to watch or whatever, but you literally sat and counted up the flights in eleven different samples through the summertime. Now, the numbers that you are going to see here, only count the flights in and out of East Hampton, Gabriski, Gabreski, or the helipad. They do not count overflights or they do not count flights over four thousand five hundred feet. So this is what we came up with as far as Gabriski flights and the areas in which they fly over. So in Gabriski, you can see a hundred percent of the flights in and out of Gabriski fly over the western part of the town. That's because it's located in the western part of the town and it's not contiguous to another town. In other words, it's not on the Brookhaven line where the planes are flying right out or anything like that. It's squarely in West Hampton. East Hampton, on the other hand, East Hampton, we, it's, it's right on our border and we wanted to count those flights too. So, oh, here is another one. I forgot that I left this one on there. Yeah. So we looked at this and, you know, we actually, helicopters can fly any route that they want. They don't have to file a flight path and it's determined on safety. And it's at the discretion of the pilots. So earlier in the summer, we were seeing a lot of flights out of East Hampton over the western part of the town. And later in the summer, we saw that number go down a bit. And so we tabulated them all. And this is what I'm gonna show you in a bit here. Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's the, those are the statistics from that sample period. Okay, let's keep in mind total annual operations. Okay, let's keep in mind total annual operations. Gabriski Airport is about 56,000 flights a year. East Hampton, 30,000. Could not find a data on the heliport, but we are watching the flights in and out of the heliport. So what we did was we took 11 different days and we analyzed those time lapse photography days and we came up with these numbers. And these are the evaluations for Gabriski Airport. Where they flew over, how many flights and where they flew over, for example, 47 flights. Well, six of them flew over the eastern part of Southampton, excuse me. Nine of them flew over the North Fork, et cetera. Very few flew over East Hampton at all. And you probably can, you know, understand why. And so that I came to these different percentages based on the total amount of flights. So with 56,000 flights, well, 100% of them go over the western part of the town. They've got 56,000 flights. Most of them are using the noise abatement routes. 18% in our evaluation fly over the eastern part of the town. So that means annually, the eastern part of Southampton Town gets 10,800 flights in one year. The North Fork, 14,500. And this is from Gabriski alone. These are not flyover. This is not East Hampton. This is from Gabreski Airport. And then if you look at East Hampton, 2,200 flights projected over the western part of East Hampton, 1,600 over the eastern part from Gabriski Airport. So we did this in order to try to quantify the amount of flights that come in and out of Gabriski where they're flying. And we did the same thing for East Hampton. And that's the next slide here. Oh, yeah, we got clever here. Um, so I put this on the map. So from Gabriski, 26% of the flights on our sample data flew over the North Fork, which would equate to 14,500 flights in and out of Gabriski, right? An operation is either going in or coming out. Alright, so we call them an operation. And so over the eastern part of the town, 10,800 flights. Okay, let's take a look at East Hampton. Now, East Hampton Airport. We looked at the operations. There are 30,000 operations in Gabris, excuse me, in East Hampton. And we looked at the percentages of flights from East Hampton on our sample days. We're trying to gauge how many flights are from East Hampton, how many flights are from Gabriski? How many flights are from the heliport? And I think this kind of tells it a little bit more here. Okay, I'll let you digest this. So Gabriski, excuse me, I'm getting the East Hampton Airport is located right here. 30,000 flights annually. And we created this operation zone because we were seeing, we were seeing literally on these time lapse photography, that was a lot of planes and jets that were coming in and out of the operation zone, flying directly from the airport into Southampton Town. So here is what we found in our 11 sample data, two and a half hour studies that 66% of the flights of the operations from East Hampton, 66% go over the eastern part of Southampton Town. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone here, right? We know this. They're flying over this, particularly that November route. The noise abatement route that goes over Southern Stack Harbor, New York, North Sea area. They're getting a lot of flights. Also Sagaponic Bridge Hampton as well, but really a lot of flights are, but what, what I thought was kind of surprising here is that 25% of the flights from East Hampton are actually going over the western part of Southampton Town as well. So 25% of 30,000 is 7,500 flights. And so that, those are predominantly going over the beach areas, but not entirely. And it's our belief that in order for this board to be fully informed that this kind of this kind of research really needs to happen in order for us to, you know, consider any kind of decision here. And just so we understand what this is, if you take a look at the North Fork here, the North Fork gets 21% of the flights. Now, this is everything. This is jets, propeller planes, sea planes, helicopters. We didn't really discern different different aircraft. I can tell you that if we did, the helicopters predominantly are coming over our town. So from East Hampton, 21% of the flight over the North Fork, so they can expect about 6,300 flights annually from East Hampton Airport alone. Excuse me, I'm hitting my computer and it's just, um, now the western part of East Hampton Town, this is the part outside of the half mile ring around the airport that we created. They only get 33% of the flights from their own airport go over that part of East Hampton. It is half of what the eastern part of Southampton Town gets. And then that eastern part of East Hampton Town, well, they get 9% of the flights from East Hampton Airport. And I think that's, that's significant for this board. I think it's significant for their own board or anyone else who is taking a look at this data. Again, these are only flights in and out of East Hampton. Okay, so there it is. That's what we, what we looked at this summer. Now, the next slide, we put together all of the flights from East Hampton and Gabriski. Again, we did not count over flights. We did not count flights above 4,500 feet. And from East Hampton and Gabriski, these are the numbers of flights that these areas will see in a calendar year based on our random samples. Southampton Town East, 30,000 flights. Southampton Town West, 63,000 flights. Of course, that's 56,000 from Gabriski, but it's also another 7,000 and change from East Hampton. The North Fork, okay, you can see it 17,000. And then the eastern part of East Hampton from the two airports combined, 4,380 flights. So I thought this was significant. I think it's significant that the town of Southampton actually sees more flights from East Hampton than East Hampton gets. And you know, we've discovered it. We put it, you know, empirically, I'm going to put my research, we're looking, you know, to create a page to put all this stuff on for so everybody can look at it and evaluate it and criticize it, whatever you want to do, but it's there. And so going back to, moving forward, Gabriski Airport. We are concerned about air traffic in Gabriski. It is an unrestricted public airport with a very, very large runway. I don't have to tell anybody on this board that, but I know that the public is watching. And they do have the noise abatement zones. A lot of the jets that are coming in and out of Gabriski do fly over Hampton Bay's and they, they bank down into that northwest approach route and then exiting too. We're getting significant complaints southwest and southeast when the jets do not use the noise abatement zones. Again, it's a voluntary noise abatement program that they have there. It is an unrestricted public airport that is controlled by Suffolk County. East Hampton. And why it's important to us, I believe, is that East Hampton, they are considering changes to their airport. They haven't said what those changes are, other than what I reported to this board from their economic feasibility statement. But they have released a diversion study earlier this week. We are going to be taking a look at that. The diversion study was based on potential operations. They looked at Montauk, they looked at Matatack, they looked at West Hampton. And they literally said, okay, if East Hampton were to close and that those 30,000 flights, if they were going to go somewhere, where are the best places that they could go? And of course, Gabriski being a large public airport with a lot of runway space. They said that Gabriski could take, you know, literally most of the air traffic or all of the air traffic from East Hampton. They really didn't get into behavior of, of, of the people using East Hampton Airport or anything like that. But I want to take a look at the diversion study. Again, I believe that they have it up on their website already. It is open to the public. You can look at it. And I certainly urge people who are interested in this to do so. So East Hampton, the diversioner diversion studies, and they are having a series of hearings. The first one is tonight. These, well, two of them were live, but now they're all virtual because of pandemic. And here are the dates. You can go on to the East Hampton Town website if you are interested in giving public comment and let them, letting them know what you think. You know, you're certainly welcome to do that. And so with that, that these are our results here. Here's the East Hampton operations. Once again, I think it's significant that the town of Southampton gets a lot more flights from East Hampton than East Hampton actually gets. And then here are the numbers from Gabriski Airport. And of course, I think, and I, our data has shown that the portion of the five east end towns that has the most air traffic is the western part of Southampton Town. And these numbers are numbers that, that exist today. I do have an ask for the board here, going back here, here we go, combined. It is, it is my belief and I would like input from the board is that operations from East Hampton, we wrote a letter to the Eastern Regional Helicopter Council. We asked them to fly over East Hampton and go out over the ocean. I believe that this situation is, it's unacceptable that this status quo is not acceptable to the town of Southampton and that we ask that East Hampton Airport change their flight operations so that they go over their own area and out into the ocean. Or whatever changes they, you know, want to make to, to remedy that. So with that, I will share this with anybody if, if you would like to see it. And so I'm going to stop sharing my screen and we're back.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Skivoni. That was a very thorough. And in terms of takeaways, first, did you get any response from the request to have the incoming and the outgoing traffic all over East Hampton? That was from the, the Eastern Region Helicopter Association, right? So no response?
No response.
All right. So in terms of takeaways, we have obviously the concern about East Hampton closing their airport. And you know, for some, that would be great news. And for others, that would mean a 50% increase at Gabreski plus all the road traffic and that would be a concern as well. So that's something we need to obviously be paying attention to. Is the November route. You had, you had mentioned earlier that the North Fork really came together and and fought against all the air traffic going over the North Fork with Senator Gillibrand and Schumer and Congressman Zeldin, et cetera. I think we need to put up a unified front against this November route because so many people are being affected by it. We need to say that we have just simply shifted the noise burden from the North Fork to Hampton Bay's. It's unacceptable. And they need to fix it. I'm not saying necessarily everything has to go back to the North Fork. Maybe to some degree, the burden has to be shared. It has to be spread out, but we need to, in a unified way, pressure the decision makers here. And I understand it's voluntary, but people obviously are following the voluntary routes. We, you know, we need a unified frontier, Councilman Skivoni. So we need to follow the example of the North Fork and you know, make those demands to our elected representatives at the federal level that, uh, you know, we are watching and we're, we are very unhappy with the current voluntary flight paths and we are expecting them to change it so that the burden is more fairly distributed.
I'd, I'd like to jump in because, and I agree with you supervisor. I think there's also if, if Councilman Skivoni, if you could supply to us the links and some of the information, you, you had the list of when these meetings are being held in East Hampton in particular. It would be very useful if we could distribute that to our civic groups who have been asking for that information. It's difficult to say, you know, go, go and look here. If we could provide them with, you know, not a set of links that they can, they can go and attend via Zoom and, and make their voices heard. I think that's a big part of being able to do that as well. I know certainly in the West, we, it's a big part of the discussion that we have all the time. And I'm, I'm really anxious to find a way for the population to be able to have their voices heard in a relative way, particularly in discussions with the closure of East Hampton Airport and, and you know, the potential impact that's going to have on the western part of the town, which are actually to me, after seeing your data here, seem bigger than I expected. And I'm a pessimist when it comes to this. So I'm, I'm quite surprised, more surprised than I expected to be. So if you could give, give us that, provide that, we can use that as a format to circulate among our civics and then I absolutely agree with the supervisor that, that we as elected officials need to put a lot of pressure on, on those in federal government and those other authorities to to provide a strong unified message that this is absolutely unacceptable.
Okay, I did meet with the CAC West and apprised them of what East Hampton was doing and gave them the links at that time, but we certainly, you know, will make sure that they have the links. I also met with the Hampton Bay Civic Association and did the same thing. Although the data that we had at the time was not in the form that we, we currently have. We just literally finished up our, our review of, of these overflights. And you know, I want to thank you all. Yeah, we certainly should have a unified front on this. And supervisor, the numbers that East Hampton put out, they said that if all of East Hampton went over to Gabriski, it would be a 40% increase. And that was kind of the worst case scenario if like every single flight that ever, you know, went into East Hampton, landed at Gabriski, it would be a 40% increase. And I think nobody, I, we all understand that that would be it would, it would really, really change things over there. And not for the best as well. One of the things that, that the East Hampton Town Board brought up was that in their economic feasibility statement, they did, they did a study. They surveyed the people at East Hampton for a summer and they asked them if this didn't exist or if you couldn't come to East Hampton, how would you get out to the east end? And 50% of them actually said they would take a different form of transportation. So I'm not saying that the numbers are good, but they're not, you know, there's, there's more work to be done there. And I think we need to do that work as well in order for us to, you know, fully understand what this would, what this would be. But we certainly would get those links out as well. And again, it is on the East Hampton Town website and you know, people, the reason I'm bringing this in because this is happening now and you know, it's incumbent upon us, I believe, to talk about this when it's happening. I did send letters out to all of our incorporated villages and our elected officials in those incorporated villages, letting them know that this was happening and providing the dates as well. So we could push that out to our civics and CACs as well. So tonight, there is a, there is a meeting and I would like to tell the town board of East Hampton who are listening, you know, and they don't actually have control over their own airport and flights. And I would like to tell the Town Board of East Hampton who are listening, you know, and they don't actually have control over their own airport and flights yet. But I I want to to let them know that that this is this status quo is unacceptable to us. And. I wanted to hear the board's opinion on that.
Well, can I ask a quick question? I know we we have a hard cutoff at twelve, but. Was there any discussion on what reaction there might be to the closing of East Hampton Airport relative to finding alternative methods of? Of getting aircraft out either sea planes or, you know. Designation of new helipad pads or things like that as a as kind of a reaction to the closure of the airport there and the impacts that it might have. Locally with people trying to get creative and find other alternative ways of getting getting people out. From the western area to the eastern area through various different kinds of aircraft.
We have a hard cutoff at twelve?
No.
Okay. Do I have six minutes? Is that what?
No, I thought we, yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, you're it's a good question, it's a thorough question. And councilmen, they certainly have not studied, you know, whether or not people would build helipads in their backyards and and things like that. But as far as the diversion report, we said in this board that we would take the diversion report and then study it ourselves to see, you know, what. What we thought of it. They have not come up with any conclusions. However, I I think the fact that, you know, from East Hampton Airport, flying over the eastern part of Southampton Town and the western part of Southampton Town. That it's really more than appropriate for us to ask them to change that in some way, shape or form. And, you know, don't read that as closure or anything else, except the fact that we don't like twenty thousand flights from their airport flying over our residents.
Yeah, I the the obviously, the other part of that argument is that if if there is closure, and that's the reason I bring it up is. The the concern that the residents of the western part of the town, which already have quite a few flights. Will get these additional flights on top of that to exacerbate an already terrible situation as it is noise wise. Right now, that's the reason I bring that up. But, yeah, if you could, and if you could send us, I I, you know, I was at the CAC West when you presented this last time. But I didn't, maybe it got sent out, but I didn't see something digital that, you know, people can click on that we can get to our. Our membership and our residents in the local areas so that they can attend and and see the, you know, see the, see the actions of East Hampton's undertaking. Or what's going on there so they can make their voices heard. Something I could distribute.
Yeah, okay, so. So is it appropriate, board, for me to ask East Hampton Town not, you know, that this status quo really needs to be addressed? And I'm not suggesting anything except that we're not and, you know, we've got a flight path in the eastern part of the town that, you know. Both over Sagponic and Bridgehampton and then in the Sag Harbor, New York North Sea area that goes down to Tocco and Hampton Bays. That I I just, you know, it's unacceptable.
Right, I think that it's fair for you to convey the message that these flight paths are impacting the town. And it's an unacceptable situation. It's, I I don't want East Hampton Town Board to be taking your concerns as, oh, then we should shut the airport. Because that air that needs to be fully vetted and studied. And could affect West Hampton as well and could affect our roads and could affect property values, you know, in Bridgehampton, Sagponic area. And, you know, we have to just understand those impacts if they're going to consider that. And if they're going to close it and say, well, Southampton wanted it closed. I I think we just need to do a little bit more analysis. I think as the first step is we need to change these flight paths. I know East Hampton is considering other. Less severe measures, you know, curfews, limitations. On aircraft number of landings or aircraft sizes and things like that. That can provide them some relief. And those measures might be more. More suitable would have perhaps more benefit without some of the shifting of the burden to West Hampton. So just we just need to be mindful. So I would say that if you're.
I agree, I I understand what you're saying and I am very mindful of air traffic over West Hampton too. I, you know, this is a townwide issue and, you know, as far as my work, I'm treating it as such. I'm not ignoring any other, you know, it. I mean, really, right now, the the area of the town that is affected the most is the western part of the town. I know this. We proved it, we've shown it, it's, you know, I've got the data on it.
The western part or the eastern eastern part?
The western part of Southampton Town. If you if you combine the operations from from Gabriski as well as East Hampton, it's 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 enormous. I I know that, you know, and please don't, you know, like decipher this as, you know, like some kind of like, you know, pitch for. Anything other than please stop flying over our town. Because I I gotta say, I'm not happy with the fact that we get more flights over our town in the east than all of East Hampton. You know, the people in Montauk, they, you know, they they're very, they're very Montauk United. It's they they do not want the airstrip in Montauk to be utilized. They get almost no flights from their own airport. And so, you know, I mean, they, I don't think that the town of Southampton should be burdened with this kind of air flight, you know, the noise. It really is, you know, it's it's an issue and I don't know, it's wrong.
There is a group in Montauk that is very concerned about closure of East Hampton as well and having a lot of those flights go to Montauk. Right, and then all that traffic heading west to where it was intended to go, the road traffic. So I know because I get those mailers as well.
It should be noted that that the Southampton Town Board historically and not this board, but previous boards. When the issues of air noise in East Hampton has has really come up. You know, we. Well, let's put it this way, I I believe that we have a bit of paralysis on this issue because of our east-west, you know, it's almost like a a threat. Well, if we close, you know, West Hampton will get it all, I'm going to just say it. So what has happened to us is that the flights have been shifted over our town. I mean, it's it's happened. And so now we're dealing with it. And, you know, the folks in Hampton Bays who are now under the November route. Takahoe, Shinnecock area, you know, they're they're living with this now and. You know, I don't have a great answer because I understand this well. It's like I said, it's a townwide issue, it's a complex issue. That's why we wanted to get some statistics to back up anything that we do.
All right, so what you what John was referring to before at noon, we do have some interviews scheduled. So I don't want to be too late getting to those interviews. We do have Ryan on who can give us a quick COVID update. And I don't think that I have any updates per se that can't wait until the next work session. I'll I'll take a quick look, but maybe Tommy John will be okay, we go to Ryan, we'll get a quick update.
I think, you know, I think we're done. Thank you, board, for listening to this. We are going to come back with the diversion studies and, you know, we're going to look at this further. This is happening now.
Before we cut to Ryan, if I could, Tommy John, thank you for bringing this to the forefront. And thank you for sticking with it, it's important. You know, Hampton Bays is getting as many flights over Hampton Bays as East Hampton. And it hasn't gone unnoticed, we're getting a lot of complaints. It's almost impossible to go to the Shinnecock inlet and enjoy your day. The November route has killed the quality of life on the beaches on the South Fork. And I really hope that you're successful in rerouting these flights, so thank you. Agreed, go for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we just, we need to really organize, we need to maybe put together a big coalition of affected stakeholders. To really get a message and, you know, and demand an audience with our federal delegation. They need to hear us out and provide all this statistics. Because I went to a lot of the meetings the North Fork had. And they really did get organized and they did create a lot of a lot of pressure that got these routes changed. And we have to replicate that model.
And they know that these routes can change tomorrow and fly over them. So I'll I'll end with that.
All right, so let's let's get Ryan to give us any quick update on COVID. And I guess Hurricane Larry, which I think is pretty far offshore, but Ryan?
Sure, thanks supervisor, I can keep it real quick and thankfully, we can keep Larry really, really quick. It's really an onus for us right now, the track is way too far off. Or I don't know that we'll even see much in the way of like rip currents associated with Larry. But that'll be the most that we're looking out for at this point. No, no real impacts from that storm, we're well outside the wind cone, we're outside the error cone. And it would have to make a major shift for it to be a concern for us at this point. As far as COVID goes, you had mentioned some of the stats earlier today. As of yesterday, our six day average was about eighteen point three people per day. New positives within the the town. Don't ask me how to calculate a point three person. But the I unfortunately, I can't give you the percent positive rate. Because we don't know what the the base that that's numbers against, we're using the Suffolk County COVID tracker. We we examine that every single day to see if there's, you know, increases and calculate what our increases are to the town's Hampton and figure out our our per day increases. But sometimes the the tracker seems to update every couple of days. So that's how we're able to see what we're we're dealing with in terms of increases and decreases on a daily basis. A couple of weeks ago. We were at like twenty-two, twenty-three per day, we dropped down to about twelve, as I said, we're at about eighteen. So we're we're holding relatively steady, relatively constant, we're under twenty. I think these are, these are good numbers, we're certainly a lot lower than some other parts of the county. Our vaccination rate is still reported to be at, you know, approximately eighty-five percent or greater in Southampton Town. As of the other day, the hospital yesterday, I believe it was, or the day before, the hospital had, you know, five COVID patients in their census. And, you know, we've heard from other hospitals up west that they're dealing with significantly more of a COVID census than that. So all in all, our numbers are pretty good. We, of course, don't want people to get to. Like Cavalier and their behaviors as a result of those numbers being favorable because we continue to see breakthrough cases. Where vaccinated individuals are catching COVID. We still want to make sure that we're encouraging people in large groups or or indoor settings with with a lot of people that they consider wearing masks, even if vaccinated. If you can, you know, tolerate it, certainly consider doing so if it's required, that's a requirement. You can't, you know, push back against that, go go along with it and and be respectful of the requirements of the individual establishments. And, you know, sensitive to the different susceptibility levels of the people that are around you that that may really be in danger of taking this home to someone or something like that. We have made more masks available at Town Hall for any visitors to Town Hall and have made a greater effort to. Stress to people that are unvaccinated that they must be wearing a mask, vaccinated people, it's an option, but we provided masks available to them. To to wear if they so choose while they're within, you know, our buildings. And we just continue to monitor the situation on a daily basis.
All right, thank you, any questions for Ryan? Okay, excellent. All right, and I'm not, you know, in seeing in terms of my own updates, everything can wait. I just remind everybody that we're two days away from the twentieth anniversary of the horrific events of September eleventh. Two thousand and one, I know it's a. It's still clear in all of our minds, perhaps no clearer in anyone's mind than for for Jim, our town attorney, who lost his brother that day as a firefighter. Who responded to September eleventh. So we all honor their memory. We will never forget what happened. And there are a number of things going on around town to honor their memory and remember the date. But I I just will say that the fire departments are sounding horns. These are fire departments throughout the town at different times at eight forty-six, which was the eight forty-six in the morning was the north. Tower was hit, nine oh three was the south tower. Nine thirty-seven, the Pentagon, nine fifty-nine was when the South Trade Center Tower collapsed. Ten oh seven was when Flight ninety-three crashed in Pennsylvania and ten twenty-eight, when the north. Tower collapsed, so. I know there are events around town too, moments of silence, etc. So. We'll all be mindful of that. That that day. All right, any other, Jim, did you want to say something? I I I saw you come on, so you're muted.
Now, I just I just finished a court conference on another matter, but just thank you, Mr. Supervisor, for those kind words. If anybody's been watching the documentaries this week, again. Hard to believe that it's twenty years later, but. I think the the most amazing thing, I think, that comes out of the documentaries that I've watched, even from that day, is the the resiliency of of our country and the people that. Who on that day, you know, facing this horrific attack, all banded together, perfect strangers from all different walks of life. Who just tried to help each other, you know, and was, I mean, obviously, it was the rescue workers, but it was also the average citizen who just. Just, you know, tried to help everybody and nobody was looking at what job they were working, what, you know, what what their race was or what their sex was or anything. They were just working together and risking their own lives to try to get each other out of that horrific situation. So although it was one of the worst days, probably the worst day in our history, is also, I think, in many ways, one of our finest days as well.
Well, your brother was truly a hero. You know, the true definition, pay the ultimate price, we're trying to help people. Trying to save people. Or any anybody else want to say anything or share any updates that can't wait announcements?
Can wait.
Okay, so with that, I'll make a motion to go to close our work session and go to executive session. As I mentioned before, we do have an interview. A couple of interviews, we also have contracts to discuss confidential legal advice and of course, land acquisition. Just, you know, you all saw the email earlier on land acquisition. So the the CPF program since its inception in nineteen ninety-nine has now generated for the town of Southampton. We have crossed the billion dollar mark in terms of funds generated in that twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two year period, which is just. I think beyond anyone's imagination that we would have that much money available to save our woodlands and protect our aquifer. Create access to our waterways. Clean up our waters and preserve historic buildings and create ball fields. And it's a real, it's been an incredible engine for preservation and retention of our character, community characters. So to all those who who made it possible, particularly Assemblyman Steele. Kevin McDonald was another person who was really instrumental in making it happen. Some of you know Kevin. To, you know, Governor Pataki at the time and just Kamala Val, Senator LaValle. Yeah, so many people really, so many organizations and the public who voted for it, who decided to tax themselves. What an incredible success story it has been. So that's a a positive note to leave you guys on. So, all right, so I'll make a motion again to go into executive session to the items I mentioned. Do I have a second? I'll take the second from Councilman Skivoni, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned for all other purposes, we're going to do these.